One, we have seven of nine board members present. So we'll go ahead and call this work session meeting to order. And the moment of silence and pledge of allegiance tonight will be led by Ms. Dethridge.
Yep. Salute. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, it's been a very long day. The only elected official I see here is Councilwoman Stephanie Welch. Welcome and thank you for being here, Stephanie. Are there any changes to the agenda? Okay, seeing none. Do I have a motion to approve?
Motion.
Motion by Ms. Horn, seconded by Ms. Roundtree. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed. Motion carries. Superintendent's report is next.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board. Just a few updates since we last met, which was real recently. So Brad Corum, principal at Carnes High, and the school's culinary arts teacher Jake Neblet at Carnes High were recently recognized by the state's PTSA organization. Mr. Corum received the outstanding principal recognition and Mr. Neblet received the outstanding teacher recognition. Both were nominated by the local chapter of the PTSA and awarded by the state PTSA. So congratulations to Brad and Jake. Mark Bowling, Carnes Middle School Band Director, has earned the Citation of Excellence from the National Band Association, the NBA. The Executive Committee of the NBA, which is the world's largest band organization, has endorsed Mr. Bowling's dossier and granted the award that is reserved for directors who have proven through their career activity to promote the educational and cultural significance of school bands. The award will be presented to him on Friday evening, May 11, at 6:30 p.m. during a concert in the gymnasium at Carnes Middle School. University of Tennessee Tribute to Educators recognized Mrs. Robbie Norman, principal at Brickhampton Cloud, with the Partner Appreciation Award. We congratulate Ms. Norman on this great honor. National Teacher Appreciation Week began today, May 7, so I want to take this opportunity to say thank you to all the teachers who worked so diligently to ensure that all of our students are afforded the opportunity to reach their potential. Graduation ceremonies will begin on May 15 at 10 a.m. and take place throughout the day, every day through Saturday, May 19. The last day for students will be May 24, and teachers will work their last day on May 25. And as you know, the mayor made his budget proposal this morning, and Mr. Caldwell, who is right now with the mayor at one of his community meetings, will be here a little bit later. And I would like for the board to consider having Mr. Caldwell to respond to the mayor's proposals and then answer questions that board members may have. So Mr. Caldwell thought he might be here around 5:30, so if we could just be on the lookout for him and let him address the board at that time. Now, Madam Chair, concludes my report.
Okay, thank you. Are there any questions for the superintendent regarding his report? Okay, seeing none, we'll go on to the announcement of the 2018-19 Board of Education Student Representative. As you know, the process to select our board student representative for next school year started back in February, and I'm once again honored to say that I had the privilege of serving as our board representative on the selection committee. This year, we had a total of 16 applicants from seven different high schools, and after a blind review and ranking of all 16 applications by the committee, which included myself, Secondary Education Director Cheryl Hickman, Principal Jason Webster, current student representative Kenley Coons, and community member Alexa Hooton, the top four scoring candidates were moved through to the interview process. The four finalists, who are all rising seniors, were Hanson Lamb of Central High School, Hannah Self of Harden Valley Academy, Artman Kozraye, and Mick Rash, both of West High School. I want to thank each of the finalists personally, on behalf of the committee, and on behalf of the board. If these students are any indication of our world's future, I can assure you the world is in good hands. Following the interviews, the committee members totaled their interview scores with the application scores, and I'm happy to introduce to you our Board of Education Student Representative for 2018-19 from Harden Valley Academy, Hannah Self. We will be sharing more detailed information about Hannah at our June board meeting when she joins us at the table with Kenley, but please help me congratulate and welcome her. And Hannah, please join myself and Superintendent Thomas onstage for a moment of recognition. Okay, next on our agenda is the presentation of information regarding the Grandparents' Parents Program, and for this, I'll turn it over to Ms. Owen.
I'm sorry, I wasn't planning to.
Oh, I was just going to let you do the introductions, if that's okay. But she's ready to go.
I'll just let you introduce yourself and your program. I think that'll be great.
Okay, thank you. Good afternoon. My name is Tracy Vandevate, and I manage the Grandparents' Parents Program from the Knoxville Knox County CAC Office on Aging. I would like to also introduce my boss and the Director of the Office on Aging, Susan Law, who's sitting back here. And I want to thank Board Member Owen for helping me arrange to speak with you today. This program began 18 years ago to meet an identified need in Knox County. The mission of Grandparents' Parents is to serve grandparents and other relatives that find themselves in the parental role for their grandchildren, great-grandchildren, niece, nephew, brother, or sister. The U.S. Census estimates that in Knox County alone, there are 2,800 grandparents raising grandchildren. That does not include any type of relative caregiver in that number, and I feel certain that probably almost everybody in this room knows of a grandparent or some family member that is raising somebody else's child. Grandparents' Parents, we provide educational opportunities and support for these special caregivers. At these meetings, relative caregivers can hear from community experts on topics concerning legal issues, IEPs, healthcare, childhood development, as well as from the many professionals in the Knox County schools. This open setting allows caregivers to support each other through their journey and hear about relevant and current topics. Grandparents' Parents also offers a monthly newsletter featuring articles on topics important to these caregivers, as well as information about resources, programs, and activities they may find useful. We also can provide information and referrals to both community and government agencies. Grandparents' Parents is free. It has no age or income requirement, and all of our programs are open to the public. You should have with you today a blue folder, and within that folder, there are brochures for both the Grandparents' Parents Program and the many offerings that the Office on Aging has. I would like to draw your attention to the left side of your folder, and in it is a guidebook. The Office on Aging is very proud to have developed this book through a grant and with help and assistance from professionals and experts from a large number of organizations in Knox County. This guidebook is only one of two that I know that is available throughout the state. These guidebooks include information about child and teen development, legal issues, childcare, additional educational needs, and more. It offers a place, if you want to look on page 31, for you to record your immunizations for the grandchildren. And if you look at page 46, it also offers a place for you to record those all-important passwords, not only for yourself, but for your grandchildren, too. At the end of the guidebook, starting on page 48, is a list of contacts that is organized by topics and the contact information for not only local programs in Knox County, but also state and federal programs. It is our goal for every grandparent and family caregiver to receive a copy of the guidebook to help support them as they raise these children. Grandparents' Parents partners with Knox County Schools, the Great Schools Partnership, the Knox County Health Department, the Tennessee Department of Children's Services, and other organizations to help identify relative caregivers to be able to extend our support. Our relationship with the schools is very important. We communicate with and provide guidebooks for guidance counselors, site coordinators, and other school personnel to share with their families. Grandparents' Parents is available to come to schools for resource fairs, open houses, special programmings, or special meetings within the schools. We want to take an active and involved approach to assisting grandparents and other relatives in providing for their needs. I appreciate your time and your commitment to the families of Knox County. Please feel free to contact me or Susan Long at any time to discuss how we can be of service.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Dethridge, did you have a question for Ms. Vandevate?
Yes, ma'am. This is very important. I've asked some of my schools that may have grandparents in the building that act as, what is it, support to what's going on in the building. So how many presentations have you made in the East Knoxville area on this particular program?
On this particular program?
Grandparents' Parents?
I've been in this office since October. So I have been to several schools around. I've made dozens of presentations since I've been in this role since the end of October.
I guess I meant in the general community outside of the schools. I know Alice Allen is over, coordinate coordinator.
Yes.
She makes presentations.
She's my suite mate, yes.
Okay, so she does that for you, or do you work together with her? Or do y'all?
We can come together. We can come separately, but I, you know, I can do presentations to community agencies, churches, support groups. So I can go anywhere that, you know, that there is a need for me to be.
Okay, so right now, you haven't made quite a, you haven't made a lot at this point, but we can go ahead and schedule some through Alice with you or on an individual basis?
Yes, or on an individual basis, yeah. If you want us both to come, then yes, we can both come.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Owen, did you have anything?
If I could, I'll just add that I kept running into Tracy at different things, and after we talked several times, I was at a luncheon for Grandparents' Parents, and what they repeatedly expressed is how important it was to have a support network of other people serving in that same role, and how relieved they were when they were put in touch with people who were in that same role. And so I wanted to let Tracy have an opportunity for us to hear about her program so that we can help put people in touch with each other through her. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Norman?
Thank you. Thanks, Tracy, for coming. Could you put a little more meat on the bone in terms of how you help the grandparents as parents? And specifically, I'm referring to, I assume that there's a lot of, there is some similarity in terms of emotional, behavioral issues, et cetera, et cetera, for these grandparents that are trying to handle kids.
Right. I will say, in the last few months, the most calls that I get are primarily legal. They have legal questions about custody issues that they have, and then food. When you're adding children to your household, a lot of times, not having enough food is an issue. So I will try to find them access to food fairly quickly, within the day, if they so need so. If they need legal assistance, then we try to attach them or to connect them with the appropriate person, whether it's an attorney or Legal Aid of Tennessee or the Knoxville Bar Association, that can help them with those questions. We offer, just last week, we had a support group meeting that was open to the public, and it was wills and estate planning. Everybody that has children should have a will and be able to designate what you want within that will to happen, if you should so pass. And a lot of people that are in this situation, they haven't thought about those wills, and some of the grandparents that I have are in their 80s, and they've got young children, and many times, they do not want them to go back to the parents in which they have received custody of them, and they really need to make that known in a will because the courts can decide that. But if they choose a preference, a lot of times, the courts will go with their preference. But if there's nothing stated, that child could end back up in the care of their original parents, which they were removed from in the first place.
Okay, and that's very important stuff, but I was curious if you got down, do y'all get down into the, you know, sort of developmental needs of the kids, or is that another, that's outside your?
I don't do case management, if that's what you're asking. I do have people that come and talk at support groups about development needs of children, emotional needs of children, that people can take advantage of. If they call in and they have a concern, then I'll try to make the appropriate contact to get them in touch with an agency or an organization that does that particular work.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Tracy.
All right, thank you.
Okay, next on our work session tonight is the strategic plan update by Ms. Fugit.
Thank you, Chairman Vans. Just a quick update, board. If you recall, we started this process, I guess, at our fall retreat, saying that we wanted to reevaluate the strategic plan. We were four years into a strategic plan, and the majority of the board members had changed, and the world had changed, and most organizations are doing a three-year plan. So we put this plan in place, January through March. We've had nine public meetings. There's been a survey sent to teachers, students, principals. It's been online for anybody in the community to give input with, and interviews have even been done with elected officials to get feedback. And so the hope was to perhaps have a rich discussion about it last week, but we got a little waylaid. And so I want Tim Young, who we all know facilitated our board retreat a couple of years ago, to talk to us a little bit about, he has actually been looking at all the information. So, Tim?
Yes, thank you, Ms. Fugit. I was asked to take a look at all of the information as it was coming in and begin to synthesize that in terms of the major themes or in categories of themes that it might be falling out into. And so what I'm, being pleased to report, after looking at well over 800 pages of information, y'all have a very thorough process in terms of giving people ample opportunity to provide input, and they did so, but it's overwhelmingly positive. People are very, you know, positive as a whole. But, you know, you also ask them things like, what could you improve upon, and what might be, you know, focus or an initiative in the future? And so they give you a lot of input on that as well. And so those have been just, you know, hot off the press, just have been collated and presented to Ms. Fugit at the end of last week. And so it's my understanding that that will be a part of their next step in terms of the process of information review, which is one of many other steps in terms of the strategic planning process, and they'll, you know, they'll be coming back to you. But all in all, it's very, you know, very favorable. There's some, you know, good findings, and you had a lot of participation.
And if I could, one of the reasons I'm here is to basically reiterate that we did have a good process. He is the neutral eye that's looked at all this, and we joke, for everything we do well, somebody thinks we don't. You know, that's the way it works. But what we're hearing are consistent themes around, they want great academic achievement. Well, that's good as a school system. They want equity in facilities, programs, discipline, everything. That comes up a lot. So we're beginning to look at that, and what the plan is, is to bring you a draft strategic plan in June for this board to look at. Because what, remind the community as well, it's the board's strategic plan. Community input is a piece of what we use, but it is not the driver of the strategic plan, but it can help inform us to let us know if the community agrees. If we want to go in a certain direction, are we hearing feedback that the community would support that? So that's really the purpose of getting all that feedback. But we plan to do a very simple executive summary-type strategic plan for the board to look at, like the one that you brought to our attention at our retreat that the board seemed to like. So we hope to do that in June, and then if you are favorable with that, then work on it another month and bring you a final plan in July to be, for this board to choose to act on or not. Any questions for me or Tim? I just appreciate you reading all that, 880-something pages.
Oh, thank you. It was a, I was happy to do it.
Yes, you have a community volunteer heart.
They did, of course, all different sources, you know. There's interviews, and there's surveys, and then there's group meetings, and so everything had to have its own kind of correlation, so that's fine. Glad to help.
Well, thank you, Tim. I don't see any other lights on, so thank you, and we look forward to that in June, Ms. Fugit. And so, okay, that brings us to, I believe, the discussion of the May ninth regular session agenda. So, let's. Okay, let me just read yours. Okay, couple of items of note, that the wording on item 8D11 has been updated to reflect that Halls Elementary School will be using coupon boot proceeds to purchase their needed technology. A copy of the communication provided to families has been attached as well. Also, since Friday, you have received copies via email of an informative presentation regarding our federal grant applications for Agenda Item 10A and an amendment to our current memorandum of understanding with Knox County regarding workers' compensation for Item 12E, and a proposed memorandum of agreement with Project Grad for Item 12F. All of these items have been attached to the electronic agenda as well. So, Ms. Cottney? Thank you. And we will move on into the meeting for Wednesday night. So let's look at items, well, first of all, item C, ratification of executive committee action. I think you all got an explanation of that. Is there any questions? Okay, item D1, any questions about it? Item D2? Yes, Ms. Owen?
If I understood correctly, this looks like a new purchase, not a replacement, and so I'm curious as to what savings there will be to the district by doing this ourselves.
Okay, Mr. Oaks?
Thank you, Madam Chair. This is actually a replacement for two grapple trucks that we inherited from the city some years ago that were well-worn when we got them. They're currently about 25 years old, have about 170,000 miles on them, and they're getting to the point where we really can't keep them running anymore. As a matter of fact, we surplused one of them last month. So this is one truck that's a replacement for two, and I would expect that we'll get 20 or 25 years' use out of it.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, item D3? Ms. Owen, are you on D4 or D5?
I'm actually on 3.
Oh, okay.
Could someone explain this program to us, exactly how this is distributed?
Mr. Oaks?
Yes, ma'am. That's our summer feeding program that we contract with the Community Action Committee for, and Ms. Foster's here, if you want a detailed explanation of how that works.
Ms. Foster, would you like to come forward and explain that?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Ms. Owen, this is a program we've done for several years, and we basically serve as the vendor, and so we prepare the meals out of West High School, and then CAC comes and picks those meals up and distributes to the sites that have signed up for service.
Okay. I guess what I'm trying to figure out is why the numbers are, they seem to be fluid, like the numbers could change. So if we're distributing to a site that has a set enrollment?
Well, it depends on which programs are taking place there. So if a school has a program for just one week, and they go through the Community Action Committee to have meals provided for that one week, it could fluctuate that way.
Thank you.
Okay. So 4 and 5, back up to 4 and 5. Any questions on either one of those before we move on? Okay, item D6? D12? 17? 18? And lastly, 19? Okay, moving next into board policies, 9A. Ms. Owen?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Looking at Policy B191, I may remember this incorrectly, but I thought that in our policy review meeting, we had discussed moving the ombudsman position to earlier so that she could serve, both to help people find the path they needed to take, as well as following through to make sure that their concerns were met.
Uh, Mr. Davis? Mr. Davis here?
Basically, what we did was, we listened to the feedback from the board members during the poll. the policy review committee meeting, and actually incorporated the feedback into the changes that you had before you. But if the board would like to make adjustments to it, we're more than happy to do that. But according to the notes that I had, we incorporated that feedback that came from board members into the current draft that you had before you.
Ms. Roundtree?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I was actually at that policy review meeting, and I happen to remember this, Jennifer. We did talk about that, but I think what we also talked about is what Dr. Davis is talking about in line 25 through 27, that it was, that line was added there to sort of address that concern, where it says, "The complainant may contact the ombudsman at any level in the process." I guess we could always move that further, you know, near the top of the policy if needed. Thank you.
Any other questions on that? Okay, Mr. Deupler.
Thank you, Madam Chair. When Ms. Owen brought this up to, to our office the other day, one thing that, that our office would recommend to, to revise this just, just slightly, this B171, is that lines 9 and 17, change the word "must" to "should." That, that would then make it cohesive with the first paragraph, talking about all complaints should be channeled. So, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any further discussion on that? Okay, Ms. Fugit?
I just have a question. So on, so on Wednesday night, will be, will we be voting on a revised language with the, that the law director has recommended changing "should"? I'm just figuring out what I'm going to vote on, on Wednesday, or does somebody need to amend that?
Mr. Deupler?
We'd be happy, our office would be happy to, to make that, to make that change, and then have that ready for Wednesday night.
I'm not pushing for it, I just want to know, you just said y'all recommended it, so I wanted to know what I'm going to be voting on. So if, if that's what y'all recommend, then I would like to see a clean copy of it.
Sorry, Ms. Fugit. We could make an alternate version as well. That way, you know, the board could truly, yeah, whichever one the board prefers.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Fugit. Okay, Board, under Board Policies, Item B with Policy I381, any discussion on this? Ms. Cuntz?
I just had a question. Is this TCAP testing the one that, online, that students have been in with all the problems with it?
Dr. Reiswick?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Yes, this would be, this is a, there's some, Mr. Deupler may weigh in eventually on some of this too, but there's, there are some legislative actions that have taken place in response to this last go-around of testing action that we're currently in that window surrounding the online.
Mr. Deupler, do you want to weigh in before I go to Ms. Owen and then Ms. Fugit?
That's okay.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you, Ms., thank you, Madam Chair. Dr. Reiswick and Dr. Davis and Mr. Thomas and I have been, have been looking at this policy for a little while now. There has been some legislation coming down from the state in this regard, but we thought it was going to look one way, but when the legislature actually passed the bill, and it was signed by the governor, it was, it was very much shortened from what we expected to happen. So our office would recommend that, that this policy be, be put into policy review, and to talk about some changes there. We don't think that it's going to make, that the recent changes are going to make much of a difference for this year, but certainly could impact next school year, so.
Thank you. Ms. Owen, did you still want to speak to that? Ms. Fugit?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Mr. Deupler, I assume that whatever our policy is, the board can always vote to suspend the policy and make, and make any kind of change based on what the legislature did, correct?
Yes, Ms. Fugit.
So just leaving it in place now would not be a problem?
Yes, and, and as a matter of fact, I could say that, that, that I don't think that, that the way the policy currently reads is going to be directly impacted by the legislation. The legislation talks about, you know, when a, when testing is done improperly with errors. So, so, so this policy doesn't directly address that. And of course, if state statute conflicts with policy, then, then I would recommend following state statute.
Okay, Ms. Horn?
Thank you, Madam Chair. There has been a lot of questions about this year's testing, and whether or not those will count for students, if they help students, that kind of thing. Do we have a direction yet, or are we, does this board have to vote on what percentage that should count for this year, school year, based on that legislation?
Mr. Deupler, do you want to answer that, or do you want me to ask Dr. Reiswick to?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Ms. Horn, I can, I can tell you what, what the legislature changed, and it, and it talks about that if an assessment has problems that occur during the administration of the test, or in the grading of the test, then, then that test shall not be used. I mean, so that's, that's pretty much the essence of what was, what was passed. We thought there might be some percentages and things like that that were in the original bill, but that was not passed. It was just a very short paragraph that was actually passed. So I think, I think Mr. Thomas and Dr. Reiswick are working on some type of a, of a, of a, of a position of the district based upon this particular statute, so.
Okay, yeah, I think, I think our, there's a lot of confusion surrounding this. So I think teachers and students really don't know whether these tests that they're currently taking, if some students are in favor of them counting because it will help them. So when, when do we expect to have some sort of answer to our students about this? Would either of you like to speak to that? Dr. Reiswick?
Dr. Reiswick, go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, Ms. Horn. Yeah, this has been a little trickier than we thought, I think initially, as, as we looked at things. They're kind of two different things. So this policy really talks about the, the TCAP scores that are involved in grades 3 through 8. And we have direction, or actually a choice, that we opted out of counting 3 to 8, 3 through 8 this year, if you remember earlier in the year, because those tests were not, those test results were not going to be back within five days. The commissioner put out, I think, a June 20, off the top of my head, but it was well within five days after the end of school. So we had already opted not to count those in the 3A grades. Where it gets a little trickier is in the high school grades. There's a uniform grading policy that's a state school board policy, I think it's 2.103, maybe? And, and it talks about the percentages that it counts in there. So typically, when, when legislation's passed, we either hear from the State Department of Ed or from the State Board of Ed to give us direction into what our, our options are. And my understanding, and I think Dr. Davis had a conversation as well with the State School Board, that they haven't passed that guidance to the districts yet. That's my understanding. So hopefully it's soon, you know, and I think we're in a place where, obviously, you know, that we want to make sure that students aren't held accountable for a process that didn't work correctly. And so I think as we get guidance from them, then as, as Mr. Deupler said, we'll, Mr. Thomas will have a, a stance on where he thinks that would be. So we're really a bit at the mercy, I think, of the state school board right now to, to give us the direction.
Ms. Roundtree?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Dr. Reiswick, I'm looking at the state board policy 2.103, and it was modified on April 20th. So are you saying that we're still waiting for an additional modification? Because the language reads, "The weight of the EOC exam on the student's final average shall be determined by the local board from a range of 0% to 15% in the 2017-18 school year, and shall be determined by the local board from a range of no less than 15% and no more than 25% in the 18-19 school year and thereafter." So it's already been updated as of April 20th. So my suggestion and recommendation would be that unless it helps a student due to all of the numerous errors that we all know about, that it would count as 0%.
Dr. Reiswick?
I think it's, I mean, I think we're of the same mind in thinking through that. I mean, it's, it's, again, difficult to hold students accountable to a process that, that was, was in error. Again, we wanted to be cautious and make sure we had communication back from the state board. I think Dr. Davis had spoken to their attorney at the end of last week, and at that time, they said they hadn't given us clear direction. So I don't, I don't think we're opposed to that at all. I think we actually would recommend that. We just want to make sure that we're clear on what we can, what the board can and can't do at that point. I mean, your reading of that sounds correct to me, but we still hadn't, hadn't had clarity from the state board.
I think that's the latest update, though. I don't think there's any additional, I mean, that, that policy was updated as of April 20th, so I would, I agree with Ms. Horn. I would like us to make a decision sooner rather than later. Thank you.
Ms. Horn?
Well, because I've heard concerns from teachers who don't know for their EOCs whether they need to come up with a test, or whether this is counting. And so I think we need to make a decision, because I think we have students and teachers who, whose hands are kind of tied, they're waiting until we decide that. And I agree with Ms. Roundtree that there are students who do want the test to count, and so I think if it is a benefit to students, it should count. Otherwise, it should be a 0%, just as you said. So I, I think we need to address it if we, if we can.
Okay, next will be Ms. Owen.
I believe the April 20th version was earlier than the Hold Harmless Bill that was brought forward on April 25th, or 24th, that also included keeping those scores out of harm for teachers. So I, I think we should make sure that we have all of those pieces before we make a decision.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Cuntz?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just had a question. If they were to integrate these scores, but they did not come back until June, how would they be a benefit at all, since that would be past the deadline anyways? How would they integrate those? How, how could they benefit if the scores don't even come back until late June?
Dr. Reiswick?
Thank you, Madam Chair. No, that's a, that's a good point. So part of the online testing, our understanding from the state was that the turnaround would be quicker, so they could get those scores back within the five, within five days of school being let out, which is when teachers are still on contract, because they're the ultimate, by law, the ones who enter the grades. And so I think the, the thought at the high school level is that these scores would be back within the five days of school being out, so it would be, it would be much earlier. And if, I mean, if for some reason they weren't, we haven't gotten any word that they weren't, that they wouldn't be, then we would have the option not to count them regardless of whatever laws are there.
Thank you.
Okay, Mr. McMillan?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I, I guess my question would sort of relate to what Ms. Owen was saying about, I believe it was, I guess it would be for you, Dr. Reiswick. It was either the last day of the legislature, I think it was, the actual last day, and I know Harry Brooks, who's chairman of the Education Committee, was on the local news talking about what they had passed, kind of, you know, right before they had adjourned that no teacher nor student would be held, I think the, the actual wording said, "To hold harmless any teacher or student as a result of these tests." I'm assuming that we're talking about the same test here. So what, how, how are we going to go about figuring that out, I guess would be my question? I mean, how, how quickly can we come up with some idea?
Dr. Reiswick?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, Mr. McMillan. No, I think, I mean, we're, we're the same place where you all are. I think Mr. Deupler referred to that. We were looking at some legislation that had talked about votes for percentages at one point, the 0 to 15%. And then as we refer that to the law office to kind of look through some of those, we were having trouble understanding what was, what was kind of in the House, would have been passed by the Senate, what had been signed by the governor, all those kinds of things, because there was a lot of legislation that came through at one time. So, you know, as of now, again, our best recourse was to, was to contact the state departments, or excuse me, the state school board's legal support. And at that point, they said they're still working on some direction. Typically, anytime legislation's passed, we try to get either from the state department or the state board, some of their guidance around the legal ramifications of that. And I think to Ms. Owen's point, some of this is still swirling a little bit. I don't know that we've come to where we're comfortable with a clear answer yet. And again, Mr. Deupler's much more versed in the law than I am, but we want to make sure that we don't ask the board or recommend the board to take an action that may not legally be theirs to take, or even clarified yet in the legislation. So, I mean, I'm hoping, I think we're all hoping that that's pretty soon that we have clarity on that. And again, it's why we reached out to the state board to try to get some of that. So, you know, hopefully before this testing cycle's done, so we can, so you all can take the appropriate action at that time.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Superintendent Thomas, I saw where Mr. Caldwell has come in, so did you want the board to entertain him at this time?
Yes, ma'am, Madam Chair, if, if the board is okay with that, if Mr. Caldwell could come to the lectern, thank you.
Oh, he's coming forward. Mr. Deupler had something to add.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I was just going to add that, that again, when Mr. McMillan was talking about Representative Brooks, Representative Brooks was on that conference committee that, that had recommended a larger bill that incorporated more language, such as the 0 to 15% and the choice and, and things of that nature. But what was actually passed by the legislature and signed by the governor was much shorter and took out a lot of that percentage language. And then, and then Dr. Reiswick and I and Mr. Thomas, we are trying to confirm that, that the State Board of Education has given that option. But I think going forward, I mean, I think this board does need to make a decision in the near future, even if it's just based upon what was actually passed in the legislature, which talks about problems occurring during an administration of a test. If this board and this district feels like that, that this recent round of testing was flawed and had too many problems, then you take that position and you, and you act under, under the new law. So, thank you.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Deupler. Okay, Mr. Caldwell?
I spoke to Superintendent Thomas today about just maybe adding some clarity to what the mayor spoke to this morning, and giving you an idea of how that would work. And so this morning, the mayor spoke and offered to, for the county to put in half of the $1.3 million shortfall as it relates to Project Grad and Magnet and TAG. And this would come as, in the form of a defined service contract with benchmarks put, put in place to allow the opportunity to see if the programs are performing to a level that, that they need to or not. In his proposal, we would use what we think will have budget surplus to end this year to closing of that program. And his request was for the General Purpose School Fund to, to do the same. I think we both feel like there will be some sort of budget surplus. And so before that we close that fund balance, we designate that money for that purpose and for those programs for one year, giving everyone a chance to put into place some sort of benchmarks to measure those, those, those programs, to have a year to discuss those programs. And so I guess I am here to answer any type of questions that I may have the answer to.
Thank you. Chris, so as I understand it, if it's a design, defined services contract, what the board approved in its operating budget would, would stand? We would enter our own MOU with Project Grad for what we've agreed to. We would do Magnet and TAG as approved in the budget. This would be just a contract to add back those things for one year, if we were willing to fund it ourselves. And so the add-back would be for one, one year, is...
Correct, and so...
So it's, it's a form of a grant?
Sort of, yes, and that's how we, kind of, we do nonprofits.
Like the literacy program?
Sort of, yes, very similar, correct. And so I think you're, you're 100% correct in that this budget that he presented today doesn't include that. doesn't include that, that money. So, your number would not change, our number would not change. The, the, the Commission would vote on that as it stands. And then, as we do year-end closeouts, then bring those back. And I mean, we could actually even do those in June or July, which is a little early, just so it gets completed, because this is something that the Commission and School Board will have to agree upon both to, to get this done, and I'm sure that the, that the benchmarks will have to be something that, that they both work on together.
Okay. That, that's what I wanted to make sure. So, we just go ahead and do what we were going to do, and this would be something that would be negotiated and brought back before this body in June or July.
Yes.
Hopefully, no later than July, so that if we're going to do this, people are actually in place to do it.
Yeah. I think what we could do is, you know, at least bring the MOU, you know, with the defined service contract in June, and then we may not do the designation piece until August, which is fine, but we know it's coming, and we know that the money's there, and that's okay.
Because if we don't agree to the MOU, it doesn't matter.
Absolutely.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. McMillan.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Chris, this, this money above the, what the Board passed, that the Mayor is recommending that we enter into, this is one-time money, correct?
Correct.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure. Thank you.
Ms. Hill.
Thank you, Chris. Is, is there a qualifier in that the monies offered in this defined service contract reinstates a program as it was last year?
So, yeah, I think...
As opposed to some proposed changes that this, that we have talked about for this year?
Correct. Here's what I would say to that. There was, I know, I've seen a spreadsheet that showed like the shortfall in those three programs. I think Project Grad was like 1.1 or a million, 43,000, you know, to be fully funded, and there was an amount for TAG and an, and amount for Magnet. I think what we're saying is this, this fills that gap, and I think the thought process is those programs stay the same for this one year in order to put, put those benchmarks in place, so we can get a, a gauge of how they're doing. And then that gives the Board in a year the chance to decide whether those programs should be funded at, at the same level, or if they're not meeting those benchmarks, then, then at that point, they could go away.
Okay. So, I think I'm hearing it is the desire of the Mayor that it's business as usual for another year.
Yes, that's what I understand. And I think basically that will have to be spelled out in the, in the defined service contract.
Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Dethridge.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And I think the MOU we're discussing today is going, is for the, well, I think Project Grad kind of formed it to 500,000. So, once, if this is approved, then we really need to make sure that you look, it's all-inclusive of what they were left out. We got the email from, it's attached to the agenda, and it says the one-year gap is also identified in there, if we can see that. So, therefore, this has nothing to do with what you're talking about, Chris, but it'll be a part of discussion later on in this meeting about the MOU and what's included and what's not included in the funding and what you have to add, you know, to answer your question, Terry, talking about business as usual. What we'd be discussing is a MOU that they did for the $500,000 per agreement with the Superintendent. So, that'll be part of the discussion, I'm sure, later on in this meeting as well.
Okay. Ms. Hill, did you, your light's still on, did you...
Let me just respond in that we, I mean, the MOU is for only one of those three, three items, though.
Right.
We still have the other two that, you know, were, have the potential of change.
Cool. Yeah, correct. I was just speaking to the, that one piece, yeah. But the Magnet, I think he was talking about would probably go back to last year's funding, is what he was, Superintendent?
Yes, ma'am, that's my understanding.
Okay. Ms. Fugit, your light went off, so do you want it on or off?
Yeah, I want it on again.
Okay.
Thank you. I was just going to say, Chris, I really appreciate you coming and explaining this, but as we know, this is all subject. I mean, the money's got to be there, we've got to agree on the MOU, so I think for planning purposes for today, that was nice news this morning, that the county is willing to offer us the money if we're willing to put up the half, but that really doesn't impact anything that we're thinking about now.
And I would say, yeah, I was, talked to Superintendent today and said, I know this just got threw at you today, if you need somebody to come to the knot to speak, I'd be happy to do so.
Okay. Ms. Roundtree, and that finishes us up.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just wanted to add to Ms. Dethridge's point into what Mr. Caldwell was saying. So, my understanding, we would still have the MOA, but any funding above and beyond that, because it is a one-year limited fund, would have to be a separate agreement apart from what we're talking about today, specific to Grad.
Right, Mr. Dethridge.
Yeah, specific to Grad and Magnet and Talented and TAG.
Yes, yeah, but I'm saying that we're, we're...
But we're talking about the MOU today.
Yeah, yeah. But they're separate.
Ms. Dethridge, did you want to add anything on that?
Only, only that what Ms. Roundtree is saying is correct is that this Board has an MOA with Project Grad on the agenda for Wednesday, and, and, and that is an agreement that would go forward for several years perhaps, but, but with this being a one-year agreement, as, as Mr. Caldwell's talking about, I mean, there would, there would need to be a separate agreement for that, which would spell out any, any additional services, whether it's Magnet, whether it's Project Grad, or what have you.
Thank you, Chris. I think that's it, and thank you for coming tonight. We can resume now back with Board policies, and we were getting ready to discuss Item C, the first reading Knox County Board of Education Policy, J191. Any discussion on that? Okay, Mr. Norman.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I was, first, just a question. Did we, I thought we planned another review of this in a, in a policy meeting. Did we ever?
Dr. Davis.
Did we ever get to that again, Clifford?
I don't, I don't recall that. I thought that basically we would actually, after Ms. Massey had conducted the surveys and gathered, gathered all of that information, that we would actually bring it back before the Board, but if the Board wishes, we, we can, you know, we'll do whatever the Board wishes.
Well, that's, that's what I was curious about, rather than us trying to, I'm sure, well, I've got four or five things that I would ask questions about it within the policy, and I just don't feel like this is the right place to do that. I feel like a policy meeting is, is the venue. And plus, I want to know what Missy's got. So, that's, that's sort of my, my view on it.
Okay. Ms. Dethridge.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I think the, if I may be mistaken, but I thought we said a 30-day delay to kind of answer the questions. I didn't know we were supposed to have a policy review, but that, you know, I guess, whatever works, that's fine, just long we can get him his, answer to his questions. But he did say 30 days, and so I guess that's why he brought it back in 30 days with whatever information he received within that 30 days.
Okay. Ms. Horn.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The only, the only question that I have on this is the intervention response guidelines, it almost reads like a flow chart, like you have to go through each of these. So, I guess my question is, does anyone, anyone else see it that way? And we may need, the only thing I would say is we may need to add a sentence at the beginning that specifies that these things may be, this, situations may be handled in the following responses. Ms. Massey, if you would like to give me feedback on that, I would appreciate it.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So, we have a disclaimer on everything that says a principal prerogative for anything. The principal, based on the facts of a specific situation, could make a determination that they would bypass any of the categories. Obviously, if, on a day-to-day basis, the, the ideal thing would be to do the least intrusive or least, you know, least disciplinary, disciplinary action, if that's appropriate.
The only question I had is if a parent looks at this, are they going to think that it has to be? And, but if, it may be that there's enough disclaimer in there already with the principal, with the principal's discretion that, that it's, that more information is not needed, but that was a question that I had, if anybody else read it that way, as far as would a parent look at this and think that if it was intervention response B, that all of these things would be done? Because they, they would not necessarily all be done, correct?
Correct.
So, I just wanted to make sure that a parent wouldn't look at this and think all of these things have to be accomplished. So, do you understand what I mean? So, that was my only question.
Mr. Norman.
So, my question remains, do we, are, are we going to have a policy review meeting in the near future where we could take up questions to this?
Ms., Dr. Davis.
Madam Chair, the answer is yes. We're in the process of scheduling one within the very near future, within the next few days or so. We're going to try to make sure we gather, work with the Board on your calendars and have that put on the books.
Okay. And, and Ms. Massey has some information that will be shared at that policy review that we haven't had, or is that not true?
Ms. Bass.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I will, I'll be happy to review. I have done a presentation to the Board, both of the initial survey and then the additional survey when we did that with the group, so I can provide that information. We can review that again.
Okay.
I don't have anything additional to that, to that last presentation.
All right. Thank you.
So, Dr. Davis, would you get with Ms. Cote and send out the earliest possible date for a policy review meeting?
Yes, ma'am, I will.
Okay. Thank you. Okay. Moving into Grants, 10A, any discussion? Ms. Cote pointed out that there's a presentation attached to 10A. Dr. Ryswick, do you want to kind of review that for the Board?
Sure, I'd be happy to. Thank you. As we, this is annually, we, these federal funds and federal budgets go, go before the Board to be approved, and typically, we don't do a presentation on it, but because there had been some different confusion in recent months about what each of those funds are allowed to do and, and what those funds can be used for, I asked the, the folks who, the department chairs who run those, to put together like a couple of slides, just to kind of give you, one, the overview of how those funds can be used, what our flexibility is, what we're proposing, because there's, I know there's a lot of paperwork with these, kind of what we're proposing in the big categories to use that for, and then if there were any changes to that funding level from last year to this year, because those are typically the questions that we, that we get on that. So, if it's okay with you for us to do that, okay?
That'll be fine.
I think Ms. Cheryl Martin may be our first, our Director of Federal Programs.
Okay. So, I'm going to do, do an overview of Title 1A. So, Title 1 of the Elementary and Secondary Education Act, ESEA of 1965, was amended by the Every Student Succeeds Act, ESSA. So, the purpose of Title 1 is to provide all children significant opportunity to receive a fair, equitable, and high-quality education and to close educational achievement gaps. The LEA is also required to use Title 1 funds to provide academic enrichment services to eligible children enrolled in our private schools. So, District Title 1 Funding, there's several federal requirements. The first of which is that we are required to use a common poverty metric, and Knox County uses the direct cert plus the 1.6 multiplier. Some of the other federal requirements are that we have to serve any schools that are at 75% or above in poverty. The funding is spiraled out based on the poverty ranking. The highest poverty schools receive the highest per pupil amount. We are required to take right off the top equitable services for our non-public schools. We're required to do a 1% reserve for family engagement. Another requirement is homeless services for title and non-title schools, and then also indirect cost. So, the FY19 district set asides, they are our two pre-K schools, Sam Hill and Fair Garden, and then four additional title pre-K classrooms at Dogwood, South Knox, Pond Gap, and Maynard. Equitable services for non-public schools, our family engagement, our homeless services. This year, we're doing extended contract for the priority and cusp schools and our indirect costs. And Knox County is funding schools at or above 54.9% poverty. So, the changes in Title 1 funds from school year 1718 to 1819, so for preliminary budgeting purposes, the state recommended that we take a 4% decrease on our final allocation that we got in December. So, that allocation in December was $14,895,762, and the preliminary allocation that you see the budget on this year is $14,299,932. So, the summary of what the schools are, are proposing to spend their Title 1 budget on for 1819 is direct instruction, which will be teachers, educational assistants, subs for planning days, and professional development, materials and supplies and equipment, instructional support, and that's our guidance counselors, social workers, coaches, nurses, professional development stipends in the Title 1 department, and then the indirect cost. At this point, I'm going to turn it over to Title 2.
Good evening. So, Title 2A is, is primarily for professional development, and so we are limited to the purpose of either supporting in-service teachers or recruiting and retaining teachers. We also have to, we can serve every school in the district out of this federal fund. We are required to have a private school set aside, and this is one where we actually ran a payback plan from, there were 35 states who did not pay enough to their private schools, were in the second to last year of our payback plan to the private school. So, that takes a little bit out of our carryover. With our charter school, we have to serve anything that we pay for with Title 2A, we have to invite the charter school to participate in that training. So, an example of that would be, we are doing the science standards rollout through Title 2A, so we would invite them to participate in the training around the new science standards. Our priorities for this year, it's pretty much limited to personnel, which we took a 5% reduction this year, which is about $90,000. So, we're able to fund the eight RTI square coaches. That fits with the Title 2A requirements because they do professional development in the schools and support administration. We also added the five math coaches. We have the one ELA coach, two science coaches, a social studies coach, and I put the ELA coach up there twice. But they are working with teachers to understand curriculum, to develop resources, and to meet the needs of the students in the classroom. So, with carryover funds, we are then able to pay for subs for the year-long reading course. We're a math academy that our secondary teachers have requested of us. We have an Algebra I community of practice where we are gathering together some teachers at Fulton and Austin East who are digging deeply into some Algebra I questions that they have, and we are looking at a middle school honors academy for, working with teachers for supporting that middle school honors program. I also have some teachers who I am able to pay for professional development to support their colleagues in the portfolio process, and then you can see the state standards training that we've rolled out through those carryover funds in the past and what we plan to do this year and next. Title 3.
My name is Sharon Kate, and I'm the supervisor of ELL. Title 3 funds go to support, to supplement the title, the ELL program, and the purpose of the funds is just that, to supplement... is just that, to supplement and not supplant. We also use those funds to serve or for eligible children in private schools, just as mentioned Oops, sorry. Changes in the budget for the upcoming year, really, our funding comes from what's called our October 1st count, and they take the number of ELs that we have in the district from the EIS, and they base funding on that. And so, it's interesting to project because we never know how many students we're going to have. For this school year, we had students, 3,437 students. Our current enrollment as of today is 3,587 students. That will fluctuate as students come and go. The final allocation for this school year was $403,752.23. As you will see, that is a preliminary budget allocation for the next year. It will depend on that October 1st count. The summary of what these funds go for, again, it is to supplement the instruction. It's for support, that can be anything from a tutor, for a newcomer, it can be a summer program, to pay an ELL teacher to provide instruction, instructional supplies and materials for English language development. That can be additional books for the students, supplies for summer, if we have a summer program, Title 3 administrative assistance who helps us keep our numbers straight, professional development such as PSYOP, which assists with newcomers, and again, private school
So, I'm going to cover a little bit about our Title 4 budget. This has been our first year that we've had Title 4, so we're moving into our second year. It really is designed to make sure that we're thinking about academic achievement, thinking about well-rounded students, conditions for learning, and thinking about how do we improve student literacy through technology. And I've done mine a little bit differently. You see, I've broken down the dollar amount that we've allocated to each area, but a lot of it is in our regular instruction program, looking at a couple of educational assistants to support some of our students who have more intensive behavioral needs. We also have some certified subs for restorative practice training that we are planning to do, and then waivers for AP, IB, and ESO. Again, when you think about that total student support, we're looking at behavior liaisons, family liaisons for our welcome center, and an augmentative communication specialist. In regular supports and instruction, we also have some specific money set aside to do some staff development for restorative practices. And like all of the other federal grants, we have a certain requirement that we have to meet for all of our private and homeschool students, and you can see that transfers out, that money that goes out to private school and homeschool allocated at the end. So, I'm going to flip to IDEA, which is our Individuals with Disabilities Education Act, special education grant. And I just highlighted a couple of terms that sometimes people have questions about, and Sharon Kate mentioned, but these dollars are used to supplement, not to supplant. So, there are certain expectations that the, you know, that the district has to do out of the general purpose, and then these additional federal dollars are for us to continue to grow those programs and provide additional services. We have to maintain maintenance of effort each year, and that means we have to look to make sure that we're not decreasing our general purpose fund spending on students with disabilities, which we have maintained maintenance of effort for as long as I've been in the district, which is more years than I care to say out loud. If you'll look at how we designate those funds, again, you have the dollar amount to the side. You can see we have a law in instructional staff. We have teachers, educational assistants, supervisory staff, behavior liaisons, a couple of educational coaches, and just a lot of staff to provide support beyond what the general purpose provides. You will see we have quite a bit of money in instructional materials, supplies, and equipment. That includes all of the different specialized programs. We have specialized reading programs that we utilize. We have lots of, for many of our students, because of their disability, they use a lot of consumables, or things are just damaged, and we replace a lot of those materials and equipment. And then we have quite a bit in staff development. A lot of times, some of our materials purchased also includes some staff development with that. It comes as a package deal, but we also have some additional, because we do a lot of specialized training, again, in those intensive reading programs, specific strategies for both general education and special education teachers around serving students with specific disabilities, for example, autism. We do dedicate some of our IDEA dollars to what is called early intervening services. The law allows us to look at how can we take the federal, some of the federal dollars and make that benefit all of our students, and one of the ways that we do that are through our behavioral liaisons. We have educational liaison, or special education behavioral liaisons, and then we have general education liaisons. Some of those are in the general purpose budget, and that's what allows us to be able to do above and beyond what the general purpose budget provides, and that's how we've created a few other positions. And then you can see indirect cost is what goes to finance just for the management of this sum of money. We get another smaller amount that's dedicated specifically for what is considered our preschool program, and you can see, again, and many of those resources are dedicated towards personnel. We do have some money in equipment and supplies and staff development. And again, you can see that indirect cost total.
So, I'm going to talk to you about the Carl Perkins federal funds. Really, the purpose on this is to develop the career and technical skills of students along with their general educational outcomes. The required use of these funds is tied heavily to maintaining, sustaining, and advancing the CTE programs that we have. A lot of that goes into equipment, as you know. Also into professional development is a huge component of the expectations for Carl Perkins funds. And then in general, ensuring that we have stronger pathways for students from secondary to post-secondary, and strong alignment between the programs that we have at the secondary level and whatever students choose to do at the next step. Our fiscal year allocation, this is the preliminary allocation at this point, is $822,843. Currently, that stands at about a 3.5% reduction from what we ended our final allocation this current year. However, I have been told by the state that we should anticipate receiving additional allocations as we did this year moving forward. So, that's an amount that will probably change and probably go up as we move forward. So, my breakdown's a little bit different than the others have provided for you, but what you do have from me in terms of an attachment is our local action plan. And it gets more specifically into action steps related to a couple of goals that we're required actually to have by the state. The state requires us to set a goal around both ACT outcomes and, as you'll see with Goal 2, early post-secondary opportunities. And so, we have to have a goal for each one of those. And these preliminary goals are based on the projections and the data that we have currently, and they are subject to change as we have better data back about our current ACT scores for the year and what that might mean for a goal we would set for next year. And again, if you wanted more specifics on dollar amounts, you can see those tied back into the action steps in the plan. But just briefly, as I said, PD is a huge part of the professional development, it's a huge part of the budget, and a huge expectation within Carl Perkins. And so, if you look at Action Step 1, we have, for the past couple of years, had what we've referred to as the CTE, English Language Arts Math Cohort, and that's been pairs of teachers working together on integration of lessons across both CTE and the core subject areas. So, we're asking some of those folks that have really developed that process and worked in that over the past couple of years to develop a professional development for our teachers across the district to kind of adopt that practice and do that. So, that's one thing we're focused with. Also, and you guys have heard about the importance of tapping into our students' career interest and exploration at an earlier age, and so, in order to do that, we are going to put a team together next year of teachers and counselors and administrators to help us think through developing a middle school career exploration curriculum. That is a class that's currently taught at a few of our high schools, but actually by the state's designation can be an eighth grade or a ninth grade course. And so, we're looking at developing that out to be a little more fulfilled at the middle grades level so that students are really hitting high school with a better understanding of the things that are out there, and very strong understanding of what CTE programs are available as they think about choosing an elective path. A new adventure for this year, and this was already ongoing before I came on, was a cohort of CTE teachers working with our special education teachers and our guidance counselors, and they've been working on identifying some of the challenges and barriers in the current year about what's really getting in the way of enrollment of our special education students into our career and technical programs. We know there are certain programs that have higher enrollments, special education students, certain ones have lower enrollments. We also know there's lots of scheduling challenges and things like that that get in the way, and so, we're going to have that group work together and do some outside-of-the-contract work this year to further delve into that, to look at better practices around scheduling, better practices around career advising, bump-up meetings from middle school to high school, how those could look differently to address that, and so, that's some of the work that will be taking place with that. Career and technical student organizations, which you may hear called CTSOs, are a big part of CTE classroom learning. There are an expectation as far as what is designated as a quality program indicator by our Perkins funding, they look for that, and so, we are able to provide a certain amount of travel for teachers to take students, to participate in both regional and state, and even national competitions sometimes, depending on how well the students perform. We've had students all over the south and region here in the last part of the semester competing in things like DECA and FBLA and HOSA, so you may be familiar with some of those. And then last, there's quite a bit of actually required travel to state training in Nashville for our teachers that come on new. So, our new-to-CTE teachers that are in that initial phase of licensure, coming out of industry, they're required to participate in quite a bit of stuff, and so, we have funds set aside for that, as well as our CTE Summer Institute for different CTE programs of study. Goal 2 is tied into the ESOs, as I mentioned earlier, the early post-secondary opportunities, and so, again, based on projection, we're setting a goal to increase the number of industry certification exams that our students are setting for, and then also to craft out at least one more dual enrollment course that we don't currently offer. Now, that's not a class, but an actual new course that we're not currently able to get dual enrollment credit for, so we'll be working on that this current year. Included in the action steps here, you see summer teacher externships, where our CTE teachers will be actually taking two days to work with an industry partner in their business and learn from that opportunity, and then a third day, they will spend actually taking their learning back and developing lesson plans around how that can be incorporated back into their classroom. We're increasing our funding on Action Step 2 for industry certifications for students. We've had a lot of participation this year and expect a lot more even for next year, so we're increasing our funding there. The CTE post-secondary dual enrollment alignment, that's some work that we'll be doing. You'll note there that I put "local" next to that. There's really not a funding requirement for it, if you will, like that's really just an action step we have in the plan that aligns back to what we were expected to do as a recipient of funds, but it doesn't necessarily mean we have to use Perkins funds for that. And so, that could be my time, my in-kind contribution to doing that work would be an example of that. The CTE real-world events, which if you all hopefully saw some news flash up around the CTE Goes Live, I know Ms. Dethers was there this weekend. It was a great event, my first one actually attending, and I was very excited to see those students and see what they were able to do, and then also to have an understanding of how our CTE programs contributed. So, those types of events, and we have several others, from a golf tournament to Top Ranch to our Tennessee Valley Fair competitions, students participate in that, and that is largely funded by private donorship and fundraising that we do through our foundation. Classroom supplies and equipment is the big dollar item that we have and will continue to be, and again, that's about sustaining and growing those programs and ensuring they're up to date with the industry expectations that students are going to encounter. CTE Director and Facilitator PD is a pretty small bucket, but actually, I am required to advance my license as a CTE Director to attend a certain number of the state-provided trainings throughout the year. That is largely what that's dedicated to. And then the last thing is actually a continuation, the Work-Based Learning Liaison. We had a retired CTE teacher who's been working for us this year through a Perkins Reserve Grant, and she works very closely with our teachers and with our students, actually, on ensuring that their work-based learning paperwork and portfolios are up to date, that job placements are correct. Work-based learning has a huge paperwork and workload that goes with it, which can be sort of daunting for teachers at times to take on managing that, and so, that's been a position that we've seen a lot of value in this year and are looking to use our Perkins funds to support it again next year. Last, and this is another attachment that you have from me, is a four-year rotation for equipment. In years past, you've probably gotten a fully-fledged equipment list, item by item, teacher by teacher, and what I've offered for you this year, because again, in kind of being new and talking with our support from the state, the expectation, again, with, as we think about equipment, is to sustain all programs and to look at programs across the district and ensure we're keeping all of them up to date. And so, in order to do that, we're really taking kind of a fresh look at our rotation of equipment, and so, what you do have is, in the attachments, is a four-year rotation that notes sort of who's up for this year and who would be up for the following year based on what we know from the past two years. And hopefully, that starts to ensure that we're looking at programs across the district and reflecting the needs in an ongoing fashion for different parts of the county. Keep in mind that it does not reflect the expenditure of any general purpose funds, and I think, as has been mentioned before, that's, those are very necessary to work in combination with Perkins. We are limited on the types of things that we can buy with Perkins. Consumables are not allowed in that, and we have a large number of consumables for some of our programs. You think of welding, you think of automotive and construction, a lot of those things, we have to be able to provide. We also have to look at the industry need for programs as we think about things like cosmetology, so you may see them marked or something, but if we are unable to show a high need in the industry sector for, let's say, our Knoxville region in that area, it's not that we don't put value in those programs, but we have to be attentive to which funding source we use to fund those. So, it may be marked as a Perkins, but we may, as we look at our data, have to say that would be a better funded out of local funds rather than Perkins, and we use the Perkins to support somewhere else. Currently, I am collecting those equipment requests from our teachers, and as we get that back, I work with the facilitators to ensure that, again, there's alignment to the standards for the equipment that they're requesting, that they actually do align back to them teaching and fulfilling what's expected in their classroom, and we look at the full request list to kind of balance across our two pots of funds that we have between Perkins and local. I believe that is the answer.
Mr. Norman, did you have a question for Mr. Wilson?
Yeah, I did.
Absolutely.
Thanks, Mr. Wilson. There's a bunch of us on here that are very interested in CTE and really want to be supportive of CTE, and I especially want to be supportive because my wife is a retired CTE teacher.
Excellent.
I won't have dinner tonight if I didn't say something nice. I did, I was curious about your first goal, though, and I don't know that we have anybody else in our system that has said we want to make an ACT goal, that's whatever it is, composite goal for the students that we have, and increase that by 3/10 of a point in one year?
Yeah.
That's pretty.
It's ambitious, let me say that. I would love to tell you that I sat down at a table and did a whole lot of math to designate that. Let's say we're very heavily guided by the state on what our goals and projections should be around that, so I've had some assistance on that one, is the way I put it.
Okay, and was, in that process of setting that goal, was there other discussion with, I mean, what was the internal discussion like around that?
Sure. The big thing with that is you're ensuring that, because we're talking about CTE concentrators, so we're talking about the students who participate in at least three courses or classes within a program of study. And the big thing is that you're looking at more than just your CTE skills. So, that's where you see the math ELA piece come in. That's where you see your special ed students and that cohort of work happening as well, the middle school career piece. So, it's really about, if you're looking at ACT, it's a broader scope, obviously, than CTE, and so, it's as you're thinking of the action steps, you're getting into some of those more core academic areas, some of your subgroup data to say, okay, in order to move the needle here, we've got to be bigger in scope than just the CTE skills.
Good, thank you.
Could someone speak more to exactly how we provide equitable services to private I think that's been confusing for the public for a while.
And can I ask you to talk really close to your mic, because I know I was having trouble hearing a minute ago, so can you just?
Yes, ma'am. Thank you, Madam Chair. So, Mrs. Owens, we're required to, off the top of our Title 1 district set-aside, to accommodate the non-public school. So, what we do is, we look at the number of eligible students who would be attending a Title 1 school, and from that number, we take a percentage right off the top to go to our non-public schools.
Are you saying that that amount of money is transferred to the non-public schools, or those services are transferred?
So, the, I'm sorry. So, what we do is, just like with the other, the allocations to our public schools, that money is, trying to think of the best way, the easiest way to explain it. So, if we started out it. So if we, we started out with $14,299,932, $932. So right off the top of that, we took a one, I believe it was 1.16% this year for the private schools, for all of the private schools that would be participating. And we have six. And so depending on the number of students who would be attending a Title I school, like, say, at a NOR or St. Joe's or Sacred Heart, then it's a per pupil allocation, and that's how it's divided for each of the schools. And so the money is not given to the schools, but the allocation is. And then they, they decide how they're going to spend the money.
Did you have a follow-up question, Ms. Owen?
I'm confused. So we are providing the services within that allocation?
Of course. So under Title I, what those, the allocation goes to is the same thing that it would go to in a public school. They can use it for professional development. They would use it for materials and supplies. They would use it for additional staff to reduce either class size, just depending on, on the needs of the individual school. And then equitable services under Title II and Title III are different.
How is that allocation dispersed?
So with Title I, the school develops a budget. So for example, I'm just going to say, off the top of my head, and I'm just making this number up, St. Joseph's has $25,000 to allocate for the 18, 19 school year. So what we would do is, somebody from the Federal Programs Department, either myself as a supervisor or, or one of our other supervisors, would go and meet with the school and the school leadership team, and the parents and community members. And we would have a consultation meeting on what the needs are, what their needs assessment is showing for the students. And then the school decides how they're going to spend those funds. And the funds are held at the central office, but they're spent out for the schools from central office. Okay.
Okay. I think next I saw Ms., I'll say Ms. Hill, and then Ms. Horn. Did you have another question, Ms. Hill?
Yes. On the CTE, Dr. Wilson, and this is, this is very good. I know that your learning curve has been straight up, and I really applaud how hard you have worked to, to, to be able to come up with, even if they are state goals, they look good.
I want to take a lot of credit.
And you know I have a standalone school in my district, Bianton-Salway. Okay. I noticed one of the goals is to increase the ACT. And I'm assuming from what you said, that's a state goal?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. And...
Well, it's a state, it's a state-focused area for...
A state-focused area.
For CTE. So any, any district setting their E-Plan goals this year will be required to set a goal for ACT and for other post-secondary opportunities. The projections in the data are specific to Knox County, but the goal around ACT is, is required as part of that.
Okay. So under Goal One, AS1, CTE, ELA, math cohort, is that A, is that positions?
I'm sorry, it is. It's, so when you see the, there's an asterisk at the bottom, cost-related educator stipends. So we have teachers who have been participating in that cohort over time. And so what we're asking them to do is to work as a cohort. And again, that's outside of the contract, extra work, probably going to have at least one summer day they'll be doing on that, that is about PD development, and then leading and develop, leading those sessions for other teachers in the district.
Okay. Now, you know, we lost our English, our ELA and our math position.
Yes.
So I'm just puzzled with how that fits with, with this action plan in increasing the ACT.
So is your question specific to Bianton-Salway?
Yes, sir.
So with Bianton-Salway, what I would say is, I mean, this is a plan for the entire district. And so with Bianton being a standalone, I can see that's slightly different in, in terms of that. But I would say, too, the students that they're serving are coming from Karnes, are coming from Harton Valley...
Harton Valley.
And from Powell. Karnes is probably the easiest from proximity standpoint, but the way we're intending to run those trainings, when they come, is a teacher from a CTE area can come with a partner from math or ELA. They could choose to build those lessons around those standards and work collaboratively on that either way. So if I were a teacher at CTE and I'm teaching advanced manufacturing, I could, if I had an English teacher that was interested at Karnes High School, that wanted to come to this training and go through the process of learning that collaborative planning, they could take that back to their school and still serve to support students enrolled in those classrooms, if I'm in advanced manufacturing with ELA standards, or vice versa.
Which is just, which is just good professional practice, anyway.
Well, it is. And also, one of the, again, I, I mentioned the quality performance indicators that were required to have evidence for. Lesson integration is one of those as well. So how can I show evidence that I'm using current ELA math, science standards within my curriculum to support and connect to those, those areas?
Gotcha, gotcha. To be clear, all of this is outside of our general budget?
Yes, ma'am. The, the budget I proposed here, where you see things that are marked as local, and I tried to note that, I think, that on Goal Two, the, the post-secondary dual enrollment, honestly, it's listed as local, but there's really not a dollar amount to that. That's just work within my role. Like I said, that would be like an in-kind contribution, if you will, for my time.
Gotcha.
Or that of the facilitators. And then the real-world events is all funded through the CTE Foundation, and that's private dollars and fundraising that occurs to make that happen.
Okay. Thank you. So...
Now, let me add, I will add a detail, I'm sorry.
Sure.
Because I did say that at the end about, you know, while none of this speaks to, to local dollars, local dollars do supplement. So like subs, let's say if a teacher's out and they attend a PD, local dollars may pay for a sub for them to do that. And we have that within our budget. And then when you get into equipment, that's another place, when you start to look at it, a great example would be, one of the things I'm, I'm looking into doing this year is replacing the paint booth in the automotive classroom at Central High School. That's, that's one of the things on the list. But to do that, there will also be costs related to the venting that goes out to the roof and roofing, making sure electricity is up to code, fire systems that would have to be installed to, you know, for fire safety. None of that can be funded through the Perkins Plan. So you have to have local to come back in and supplement for what would be maybe considered a capital improvement or something like that to, to supplement. So to say that, in all honesty, there are pieces that will affect local budget, but none of that is spelled out here.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you for that. Back up on the Title I, I noticed that, let's see, where did I see this? We took, we're taking a four percent, four percent reduction in the title?
Yes, ma'am, in the preliminary.
Title I budget?
In the preliminary budget.
Preliminary, okay. So, so what's being cut? What's being eliminated?
Nothing's being eliminated. So what, this is just a, a projection, but we're, well, some of the schools' allocation has gone down, if that's the question. But I mean, we're not...
We don't lose 4% of $14 million and something's not cut?
There's a reduction in allocation to some of the schools.
So what are they cutting?
Some of the schools have cut some personnel, have had to lose some personnel, and some of them have just cut out, like, equipment and professional development. Most of the schools are trying to hang on to the personnel that they have in their budget. The hardest-hit school was probably Dogwood Elementary, and they had to lose some personnel.
Would you happen to know how much money that was, that 4%?
It was...
So almost $600,000.
Yes, ma'am.
And of that $600,000, you do or do not know how many, how, how much personnel was affected in that?
I don't know the exact number of personnel, but I can get that for you.
Please do. And, and the schools, too, and the schools that...
Yes, ma'am. Okay.
In Title II-A? We're, we're losing $90,000?
We are, yes.
So what are we losing there?
I'm losing two positions.
And what would those positions be?
Well, I think that's where we were going to, we had the GT coaches in II-A, and then with the change in the budget, we moved the RTI squared coaches into II-A. So instead of losing two positions, I only have eight RTI squared coaches anyway. So I think that ends up being a shift in the budget.
Is, is, RTI coaches, is that for one levels, one, two, and three?
RTI squared is to support tiered intervention.
Tiered intervention, including level one?
Yes.
So would, would, would GT services be a level one?
They could be. They could also serve two and three. It's, you know, we're looking at, the tier one is the general classroom experience...
Right, right.
And then moving into intervention supports outside of that.
Okay. Again, just looking, looking for a way...
I know.
If, you know, if our, if RTI is supposed to service everyone, that, I'd just...
Yes, ma'am.
Appreciate the fact that they not be left out with these eight coaches.
Thank you.
And then in Title III, y'all forgive me, but...
You're fine, Ms. Hill, but we do have one more slide presentation.
Okay. We're losing $60,000?
Well, our funding is based from our October count. That is a projection, but we're not 100% sure, because we base our funding on the number of students. It can be more than that. If you will notice, our growth for this year was, it was less than two...
Hundred, 150 students.
That's right. Last year, our growth in ELL was over 250 students. And so our growth slowed down just a little bit, but we still have a large number. And I know that, that is what our funding is based on, on that October 1st count.
So our number goes up and our funding goes down?
Well, the funding is based on what we had on October 1st. What we have now is growth for this year. Our funding is always based on October 1st. And so we will know our funding, this is a preliminary budget, a preliminary, and they will base it on our true numbers come October the 1st.
Thank you.
Okay?
Thank you.
All right.
Okay. Ms. Dethers?
Oh, thank you, Madam Chair. Madam Chair. Sure, let me ask you a question. Has the 75% hour, is that new as far as schools with 75% poverty, poverty, or has that gone up? Because I know in the past, it's been lower, and sometimes it's changed. So is this a number that's mandated by the state and is new?
The 75% or higher is federal requirement.
Okay. Has it always been federal? I mean, is that the, is that 75% always been in place, I guess?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Because I know in the past, it's been a little lower for Knox County. So do we have a...
Knox County goes lower. We actually serve at 50, I think it's 52.49% and higher this year. But we are required by federal law to serve 75% or above.
Okay. Because I noticed down here, it says, when you have a surplus, then you go to 56% or something. So, so I was trying to just answer Ms. Hill's question. Um, maybe it depends on the percentage of poverty as to how it's allocated. But since you said it, we always do that way. So I still, I'm like you, I don't know the answer to that question.
Thank you. I guess we can resume with Dr. Ryswick. Did you have one more presenter with the slides?
I think actually, we thought that Mr. Dr. Wilson was going to be separate, but if we were able to combine those.
Oh, okay.
If I could just say one thing about what, what the Title I changes, maybe to Ms. Hill and Ms. Dethers' question, is we, you know, we had the at-risk, the poverty level change because it was direct cert this year, as opposed to where we were able to supplement that in the past with surveys. We've talked about that in the past. So, so there were some, I think that's, that's the reason for the multiplier, the 1.6 multiplier, to try to offset some of that. But to Ms. Martin's point, there, you know, where schools like Dogwood, because of the rezone and because of drop, a drop in the direct cert, that lost money as far as Title I this year. So every year, that's reconfigured. So whatever the allocation, whatever the allocation is that we have, everyone's reranked every year, and then it goes out from there. So from year to year, that can change quite a bit, especially in a rezone situation. So I just wanted to, I just wanted to add that. They did a great job, but I just wanted to add that. I hadn't talked in a while. Thank you.
Thank you for the presentation. So board members, that takes us through Item E, and we can resume at Item F, on approved memorandum of understanding with Great Schools Partnership for Opelone... Okay, so this is... Okay, but that was, okay. Did anybody have any questions about the, which would now be Item A, the general, the grant contract with State Tennessee Department of Human Services for Transition School to Work Grant? Anybody have any questions about that? Okay. Then we should be able to move to Item F, with the memorandum with Great Schools Partnership over the Opelone Misuse Prevention for Students and Teachers. Any questions about that? Item F? Item G? Item H? Item I? Item J? Item K? Item L? And Item M? So moving into Contracts A? And that finishes up Contracts. Moving into regular agenda items, Item A? Item B? Ms. Horn?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I don't have a question about this specific agenda item, but if Dr. Ryswick would just speak to the fact that we did recently adopt a science, go through an adoption of new science textbooks. I've had several questions from teachers about science textbooks, because our textbooks are older than the students. And science has, actually, they've come up with some new things since those kids were born. So can you just speak to the, some of the questions that I've had to you regarding those science textbook adoptions, please?
Sure. Thank you, Ms. Horn. Thank you, Madam Chair, sorry. Should have waited for you. So I, I can, I can speak a little bit to the cost on those and, and what we're, what's, what we're facing. And if there's specifics about the adoptions, Ms. Jackson's probably the best one to refer to those. So we have, as you said, it's been, I think, 18 years since we've had a textbook adoption for science textbooks. And, and, you know, we've kind of gotten ourselves in a situation where at one point, there was a thought technology was going to replace those, and that, so, but we don't really have any money in technology or the technology or the textbook. But, you know, in looking at what this could look like for this next adoption, just kind of ballpark two of the, two of the different ways we could go about funding that, or the cost for those, not necessarily funding it. If we did a one-time purchase to get us up to date with all the new standards that are coming in, we're probably looking at a slightly over $4 million one-time request. The, the other place where we would purchase over a five-year period of time, it's cheaper on the annual basis, would be just a little over $1 million a year. But it comes out after five years to be at about 5.2 million. So those are, those are two options we have. And as you all know, in the budget, there's no recommendation, or there's no dollars for that to be in there at this point. So you are correct. I think there, there are books I used to teach out of when I taught, and that's not been most recently. So it's, I mean, it's definitely a challenge. We're hearing the same thing. And, and at this point, you know, we don't have the, the funds to, to look into that. So, so it is pretty, pretty desperate.
Okay. Any other questions for Dr. Ryswick or for Shannon Jackson?
Thank you.
Okay. And Item C? Okay. And item C? Ms. Owen?
I have several concerns about item C. Um, not that I necessarily object to item C, but the first time I had any idea that this was even being considered in this way was after it was on the agenda, and that's concerning to me since it's in my district. Also, looking at, um, the movement of the, um, welcome center, and I apologize that I haven't talked to you about this yet, Sharon, I'm sorry. They probably thought it was kind of weird that I showed up to visit this week before I'd seen this on the budget, I mean, on the, on the agenda. Our welcome center has just moved to this location, and now they are being moved to a different part of the building. And that part of the building is being changed dramatically. Um, if you get a chance to look at the floor plan that is with this item, the second page where it says the proposed welcome center floor plan shows offices and cubicles, and that area is currently a large presentation room with beautiful hardwood floors. I would encourage you to drop by and take a look at this so that we understand kind of the, the suddenness that people are being asked to move around. Um, I would guess that their staff probably didn't have any idea either because they didn't say anything to me about it when I visited. So, um, it, it concerns me that we make this, this kind of a huge plan to move entire departments, entire schools without anyone really knowing that it's going to happen. Obviously, there's nothing we can do about it, uh, at this point, but I would hope that our administration would take, take all of the staff into consideration a little more when they're looking at some kind of large plan like this. They, they've only been there since October. And now they're moving to another part of the building, and all of their plans, I, I would guess, are being dramatically shifted. And they're finding out, the same time we're finding out, and this is gonna, this is soon.
Before I go to Ms. Dethridge, Superintendent Thomas, do you want to speak to the timeline of that or anything? Or if not, I can just call him.
Yes, ma'am, I can. Of course, we did have a proposal in front of the board, uh, to relocate to West Town, which is Simon Property. Um, but, um, that fell through, um, so we were, our choice was, uh, where else can we locate? So, uh, we looked, um, initially the welcome center, we were looking at Holston and, and, uh, it was not on the bus line. I know the, with the Paul Kelly, the recommendation was to have a location that was on the bus line. Uh, so it was a shift. I, I might, I thought in a couple of updates, we had informed the board that, that we were looking at, you know, at Lincoln Park. And I know, uh, John and, uh, Dr. Ryswick and Mr. Oaks and Mr. Dillingham, um, and maybe somebody else, I'm not sure, were involved in going, going out to Paul Kel-, uh, out to Lincoln Park and looking at the space. And, and, uh, again, Sharon could comment. I thought we, we had communicated with everyone in the building. Dr. Wilson, of course, is in the building as well. Um, I thought we had made communications and worked out, uh, a plan that was actually gonna be better, a better location. And Sharon, uh, you, you can correct me if I'm wrong, but I thought actually the location for the welcome center was actually gonna be, uh, more, a little bit more conducive because it would be a separate entrance and into the welcome center. But, um, that, again, I know we, we had indicated to the board on a couple of occasions, and I think that we were contemplating this move because the, the move to West Town fell through and, and at Town Center, the, the, the lease continues to go up and, and Simon Mall's not gonna, um, or Simon's not gonna continue to pay that lease. And, and we received a letter today, we forwarded to you, I think they agreed to, uh, give us a hundred thousand dollars in one-time, uh, amount of money to do renovations at Lincoln Park as well. So if, um, you know, if we've neglected our duty in terms of informing you, I certainly apologize, uh, for, for that, but I thought we had, we had done that.
Okay, Ms. Dethridge?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Uh, when I first heard about it, I was kind of concerned because I did hear that they were going to Lincoln Park. So I just went over there to see what the space, 'cause it looked like we had CTE, we had welcome center, now we're gonna put, uh, Paul Kelly. So I just went over there to see what it's gonna look like and how we're gonna fit all these things in this building. And once I took to and they showed me what their plans were, it looked very accommodating. It really did. And I, and I said, "Well, my thing is, um, I know what Paul Kelly looks like at the mall, and I've, uh, hopefully you can take those same type of, of, um, layouts and amenities or whatever to Lincoln Park and make it just as nice." And, um, and they showed me the classrooms and, and the layout and the welcome center and what they can do with the welcome center. So it, it, um, even though I had a concern, but once I went over there and they showed me the plans and what they're planning to do and how they're planning to get it done, I think it'll be amenable to what we're trying to do here. I mean, because like Superintendent said, things have fallen through. I know they've worked on several different locations, and so when they came up with this one, the only thing I want them to do is make sure the entrance and all that CTE stuff gets put away and make it look like a nice welcome center and a nice Paul Kelly Academy because right now it looks more like a CTE building.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Horn.
Thank you, Madam, thank you, Madam Chair. My question would be, the letter that went to, um, Simon Properties said it would take two-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars to renovate the space, so they've come back with a hundred thousand dollars. So can it be done for a hundred thousand dollars, or what is the, what's the plan there financially?
It, it won't be able to be done for a hundred thousand dollars. I know Mr. Oaks, uh, has got a plan working within the capital dollars. I think that we've, that we've had savings in some areas, so I'll let Mr. Oaks address.
We've, we've had some savings in our fiscal plan upgrades, and so we have some funds there that are not obligated or earmarked, uh, towards any specific project. So we don't think, uh, you know, an extra hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars or even an extra two-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars would have been unmanageable for us. So we think we can, we can work through that process, do what we need to do.
Okay, ma'am, back to you, Ms. Owen.
I want to be sure that I'm clear that I'm not objecting to this move. And yes, we did discuss moving Paul Kelly Academy. That's been a discussion for some time. And yes, we did discuss moving it to a couple of different places, including Lincoln Park. But all of the other moves happening at that same time were not all a part of that at the time. So I think when we were talking about, "Hey, let's move this program over here," I think we need to be more specific. And this, this goes, this goes back to what I've been asking for since I first came on the board regarding a fiscal note. When we're looking at the cost of something, we need to look at the cost of other programs impacted as well. So the dollar amount isn't just the cost. The cost is everything that's being impacted. So while we're, while we're at this, I'd like to know what CT pieces are still staying in Lincoln Park and what CT pieces may be moving. Because what we're talking about now, I'm, I'm not sure that I'm very clear on what is still going to be there.
Mr. Oaks or Mr. Wilson? Everybody's trying to pass it off to somebody else.
I'm, I'm happy to speak to what I know. Um, I mean, as, as we're planning right now, um, mainly the office space that we occupy right now is going to stay the same. Uh, the front office is gonna change a little bit if, as you come in. Uh, right now, currently, my asset manager has a, a small office space there, um, which is going to become Ms. Cook's office. And, um, then there may be a move, um, we have an out, outside building as well, which is where I think our asset manager's going to move to the outbuilding, uh, for that office space. And then some, maybe some changes with my front office secretary in terms of that. But other than that, our office space will, will be the same office space that it is. We may choose to not use the front office as our access point, um, moving forward, just to ease that transition. Um, we still have, uh, there's some rooms, Russ and his team were out there today, and there's still some rooms that have some equipment and things that we're in the process of trying to figure out. And we still have some, um, other equipment on, in different locations and trailers and things like that that, um, we are still, um, figuring out about our plans for moving and/or surplusing some of that, uh, stuff as well. So those things will have to be changed. But as far as our team of facilitators, uh, bookkeeper administrator, all those sorts of things, uh, we're intending to stay pretty much in the space that we are.
But what programs will still be there? What are, what are these other spaces going to be used for?
Which programs?
Are there still going to be CTE classes there?
Are you, you're referring to the adult night stuff?
Any CTE classes.
So we don't teach any CTE courses in that building. The adult apprenticeship, uh, program, which is run through the, the partnership we have with another organization, will still be there at night. Um, we're actually hoping to use some spaces at Fulton High School in addition next year. Uh, but the current plan would be for the classroom spaces to be flexible enough for adult night classes to be held in there as well.
How many students will still be there in the night classes?
Knox County students?
Um, adult students.
Um, I, at this moment, I don't have a projection number for you on that.
Has, has this been discussed with them at all? Yes, what I'm, what I'm looking at is this large room that they've used to assemble from time to time, and I'm thinking about two-hundred vehicles there at night. And I'm thinking about the Paul Kelly Academy evening classes that happen in six weeks chunks. And I'm wondering exactly how all that is gonna fit into this building.
My understanding, and, and I can't speak to Paul Kelly's schedule, my understanding is the Paul Kelly use of the rooms would be ended by four in the afternoon. And that actually by, some of the spaces that we would be recouping, I think we would actually have more classroom space actually available for the apprenticeship.
So can anyone answer whether the Paul Kelly evening programs are ending?
Dr. Ryswick?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Uh, Ms. Cook is actually here, uh, the principal of Paul Kelly, who's been involved in the, in the discussions and also in the walkthroughs that we've done, uh, making sure that accommodates. So I, I'll, I'll, I'll address that.
Good evening. I didn't see you back there, sorry.
Madam Chair, so I think that if we're looking at it the way it is right now, where the welcome center is, those classrooms are not used by CTE at night school. So when we, um, support the rest of the students in Knox County schools for our night programs, um, those students come in, but they come in, the way we've done at this, um, rotation is we've had them in different subject areas, so we could just use those three classrooms.
The issue that I'm addressing, um, is the parking issue because there is currently not enough parking for the night students who are already there. The community is very, very unhappy with the parking situation. So I, I guess we need to find out exactly how many students will be moving to the evening program at Fulton and how many students will still be at Paul Kelly because we already don't have adequate parking. They're already parking in the residence grass. And so if we are adding additional students at night, there's going to be an additional problem. And that's gonna create a problem with that community.
I think that there would be some parking issues. Um, some of our students, though, in the night school program are juniors, so they've actually, their parents drive them to school. But there, it, there are a percentage of our students do have transportation, they have their own transportation.
Can anyone from the administration address the parking problem? And what, what we intend to do about it?
Sure, I, there's, I mean, there's no doubt I've been out too. I mean, the apprenticeship program is a, is, is well-attended and has a lot of parking. I think, uh, as Dr. Wilson said, some of those programs potentially can move over, which was a plan prior to any of this, uh, to utilize some facilities as part of. I think, um, as Terry Self and, and the team came and talked about wanting some additional, uh, opportunities to work at some other schools, um, Dr. Wilson began to work with them, and I think they've identified Fulton as one of those areas prior to any discussion of this movement. So I think there could be some relief from there as well. Uh, we, we'd have to get a count, um, as, as to how many students actually will be participating from Paul Kelly's side. So, um, at this point, I don't, I don't know what that number is.
And that concerns me too, that we don't know what that number is. And I think that puts Ms. Cook in a very difficult situation. And I want, I want to be sure you understand, I'm not, I'm not fussing with you. It puts her in a very difficult situation when her night students come in and there's nowhere for them to park. And we have no idea what numbers are going to be moving to another space. I, I don't understand the planning that went into moving some students to another space without looking at what that number could be. And the fact that the parking issue needs to be very seriously addressed already, that, that's urgent, and I think we need to know that before Wednesday. Thank you, Ms., Madam Chair.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Owen. Seeing no other questions on that item, we will move to regular agenda item D. Are there questions on this item? Okay, um, item E? Okay, Ms. Horn?
Are there changes, thank you, Madam Chair, are there changes to the workers' comp, um, memorandum? Or does somebody want to address what those changes are?
Okay, Scott Bolton, are you coming forward? Okay. And you're all gonna team it together?
Madam Chair, the rest of the board, could you restate that question again?
I'm just wondering what the changes to the workers' comp, if you could just summarize what the changes are?
Oh, absolutely. So, uh, when we originally wrote the MOU with, with the, with the county, we wrote it, uh, to, to revisit it in three years to determine what kind of savings we had during that period. And then the, um, if, if we exceeded the amount and incurred additional, um, cost above what we had provided the county, then the county would pay sixty percent above that, and then we would only pay forty percent above that. And this, and then if it, if we had savings originally, then it would be a sixty-forty split where the county would get sixty percent of the savings and we'd get forty percent of the savings. In this model, we basically, our, our claims history has been better than we expected. Uh, and so when this top-budget cycle came, we thought this may be a way where we could possibly have some savings in the budget. So instead of sending the one-point-five-nine, I reached out to the, the county to see if there was any adjustments that could be made. And so, uh, this is Evan Hauser. He is the, he's in the law, law director's office and works with our workers' comp. Uh, he negotiated the, um, uh, with, with the county for us on our behalf, and, and they said we could send one-point-one as opposed to the one-point-five-nine, so that would give us a little more flexibility in our budget. But that, going forward, uh, there's really not any substantial changes other than going forward, the amount, if, if we need to add more money to the bucket, then we'll add more money to the bucket. So it's kind of one-to-one after that instead of a sixty-forty split.
Thank you.
Any other questions before they're seated? Okay, thank you. Okay, moving to item F. Questions on this? Ms. Dethridge?
I guess, in looking at this, I, I mean, I, I'm talking to, um, Project Grad. They have no problem with the agreement per se. I mean, the, the things that's been in here, uh, they've negotiated. But I guess the thing is, um, I agree with Amber. If the money is received and it's, uh, part of the one-year plan, it would be a part of the memorandum of agreement. I guess my concern is we need to make sure that our private entity or support understands that we will continue to work on an agreement that will support what they're trying to do, not only just for the high schools, just because you have, um, the transition from elementary, middle to high school for Project Grad. And to make sure that we're gonna all stay on- to high school for Project Grad. And to make sure that we're going to all stay on together and in tune in order to make sure our kids receive what their needs are, and that this memorandum makes, covers everything that may come up if we get the money. And one day Knox Kennedy decides before 2023 that they're going to go back and support the program because of the success that they may be having at that time, and that we're not tied to some type of thing that's going to limit that. So I guess that's just my concern or issue, or make sure that this memorandum, once it's approved, that it is, it can be a modified, Gary, to supplement whatever happens in the future, even though it is through 2025, we can always go back and modify and make changes to it if things happen within the program that makes it necessary.
Mr. DePur.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Ms. Etheridge, you're saying prior to June of 2023?
Yes.
By agreement, the board can modify the MOA with Project Grad? Yes, by agreement?
Yeah, so it doesn't really just tie their hands. So that way they can make changes as things happen accordingly. Okay.
Okay. Any other questions regarding this?
Oh.
Yeah, good idea. Okay, Ms. Fugit.
Thank you. Gloria, not to belabor the point, but I'm going to. So what I think we're voting on is this agreement that will run. And it has annual evaluations, and any board at any time, based on budget rules or budget constraints, what the superintendent thinks, what Project Grad's going to do, can amend it at any time. But I just don't want us to confuse that what we're voting on with this is just for the high schools. If there's a grant that comes, that is a separate thing that we would have to decide. And if a year from now, everybody decides to redo this whole agreement, you and I won't be here, and other people can make that decision. Okay.
Thank you, Ms. Fugit. At Ms. Cook's suggestion, we're going to take a recess before we move to item G. So let's say we reconvene at 7:25, if that's agreeable with the board. Okay. We're going to look at the last item on the regular agenda, which is the superintendent's evaluation model. And let me just kind of give those of you that are still left, a very concise, brief history. At the time elected to the board, the board was using a narrative essay to evaluate our superintendent, which did not align with the evaluations used to evaluate other employees in our district. So Mr. McMillan appointed a committee composed of Karen Carson, Terry Hill, and myself. And after reviewing a myriad, a multitude of models, this model was developed. However, Dr. McIntyre resigned after its approval, and then Buzz Thomas served his interim. And so neither was, there was no need to evaluate either one of them under this model. So according to our superintendent's contract, this annual review needs to take place in June, prior to the election and the current, and the seating of our new board members. So I'll open it up to discussion in just a minute. I would recommend, it would be my recommendation, that we only use Part One, as it is applicable for a baseline use only, and Part Two for scoring our superintendent this year until a new strategic plan is in place next year, which Ms. Fugit spoke to earlier. So the original model had two parts to it. The first part was based on the five-year strategic plan, which is kind of going out of effect. And the second part was more of a general evaluation. So I'll open it up to comments or discussion. Ms. Roundtree?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I guess my comment would just be on looking at section 1.1 and looking at 1.1.3, and then 1.1.4. Just concern about those two indicators, based on all of the history we've had with our standardized assessment, you know, over this past year. And so I'm just wondering, I'm just going to, you know, open it up for, I guess, my colleagues to comment on that as well. I guess, you know, we could, some other things that we could look at, particularly for three through eight, we could look at benchmark growth using AmesWeb, or, again, open to other ideas. I just think, you know, if we have a hold harmless based on the disaster that is Tian Ready, I think that it would serve us well to consider using a different metric for those items. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Do we have other comments? I do think that the first section is not very measurable, given the past three years of our testing in the state of Tennessee. So that's why I recommended just eliminating, at least for this year, Part One and going with Part Two only, unless we use Part One. That did apply, the items that still applied as a baseline. Ms. Fugit? I'm sorry, Ms. Etheridge.
Okay, so I thought that we understood that we weren't going to do those tests, and that we were going to use other methods anyway, because we didn't trust those data points. So I guess I'm kind of, if we're going to not use them anyway, so it shouldn't affect what this indicator is saying, right? Is it, so you're saying just disregard the whole section, Part One, because of test data that we weren't going to use anyway?
That we could, I think part of it, and if any time Superintendent Thomas wants to jump in, Part One was developed, of course, I guess, in early, late 2014, early 2015. And so much has changed since then, that at this late date, with a deadline looming for the superintendent's evaluation, rather than go through and address each indicator, it would almost be easier to just evaluate on the second part for this year, and then maybe reconvene a committee.
1.2, or just?
No, Section Two.
Oh, go to Section Two altogether?
Yes. So, but that's just my suggestion. I don't, it's, Ms. Hill can address it, too. She wants to, since she was on the committee last time. Part Two is the assessment of specific performance indicators, and there's five parts to that. Leadership and district culture, policy and governance. The other one is communication and community relations. And then we have also Indicator Four, organizational management. So these all kind of, and Five is performance, curriculum planning and development. So there would still be that tool with those five indicators to evaluate this year. So let me take Ms. Owen. Ms. Etheridge, I'll come back to you. Ms. Fugit, then Ms. Hill. Okay, Ms. Owen.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Are these indicators that we have, that we have let Mr. Thomas know we would be considering, or that we just come, I think it's hard to look at evaluating someone using indicators that they weren't aware of on the front end?
Mr. Thomas and I have met, and he has looked over it and gave his input into it. I don't want to speak for him. I will say that at the time we met, he was okay with Part Two, because it was kind of general. Part One, a lot of it was problematic. So, but, and he did talk to, I believe, John Beckett about what, if the board chose to use part of Part One, what was actually available data-wise. So, does that help some?
I think it makes a lot more sense to only use Section Two.
Okay.
As long as that is what was expected.
Okay. Let me go to who was next, Ms. Fugit.
Thank you. Ms. Owens, I would say that the superintendent's evaluation, and Mr. Thomas was an employee here when it was approved, and it's been public, we just haven't done one. So I would submit that he probably knew what he was going to be evaluated against. However, I understand the problem with the data. My only, and really, I'm not going to die on the sword about the data. But I do think it would be interesting and helpful if there was some way to put some data that we did, some measurement that we did think we could have, you know, Ms. Roundtree mentioned something. Just whether we weight that a lot is up to the board's discretion when you do the final review. But in terms of a baseline, it might be helpful to give some sort of number, whether you then choose to hold someone harmless or not is different, rather than putting something out there for next year's purposes.
Okay, Ms. Hill.
I appreciate that input, Ms. Fugit. The Section One, which it sounds like we're pretty much in agreement, when Ms. Bounds and I worked on this, was almost word for word, a lot of it off of the old strategic plan, which is, as we know, is totally outdated anyway. Keeping in mind that, yeah, keeping in mind that our new superintendent has been with us how long?
Forty-four years.
Yeah, forty-four years.
That's the right answer, forty-five. But thirteen months.
Thirteen months, yeah, yeah. But I do support your suggestion about starting with a baseline. Again, not so much maybe as a measure for this year, but for the coming year. Yeah, something.
Okay, Ms. Etheridge?
I do agree. Because of the data and him not being here long, but I do think some of this, some of the questions are pertinent to what our expectations of, regardless of who's in this role, and it's not the person that's the position. So I would say that we might need to look at some of them, not all of them, because I agree, a lot of this is not going to be applicable to him, because he hasn't been in there. But some of it might be, you know, I might need to know, has he retained at least 90% of his high-performance staff? Has he at least, 95 of his teachers, administrations and staff met or exceeded their, his expectation? I mean, just simple things that he should be able, since he's been here, not those 75% of the students need to be, whatever. So I don't know how you do that, say you don't answer this, 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 and this. But some of that, how well is he and his staff doing? How well are they achieving the goals that he established and has, you know? And it doesn't have to be anything major. It doesn't have to be to make him look bad. I just want to know how they feel that they're working together, how it's coming together, and just simple little questions like that on the strategic piece.
Before going to Ms. Fugit and Ms. Horn?
Ms. Horn had her light on first.
Superintendent Thomas, do you want to address any of that Part One? If not, it's fine. I can go on to Ms. Fugit and Ms. Horn. I just didn't know if there were specific things that John Beckett had that could be included.
No, I'm fine with, everything's being discussed.
Okay, Ms. Horn.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I guess my question is, one, just process. Those of you who have been on the board for a long time.
I think she's looking at me.
Lynn, Gloria, Mike, what, can you just speak to the process as far as, do we individually rate these, and then it's added together to come up with a total?
Ms. Fugit?
If I can speak to that. In the past, board members have, when we did the narrative, and I assume we would do the same way here, everybody did it individually. Then those things are also made public, that the newspaper wants to know them. But they also go to the chair, who then compiles the composite report, and the board votes on the composite report, because that's the board's evaluation of the superintendent. But we all get to do our own evaluation to inform that. And, you know, when it's numerical, you can average. But that's why the comment sections in these are so important, because that helps flavor some of the explanation and discussion.
Okay, thank you. And then?
Lynn, did I get it right?
Okay.
I was just going to say, remember, everything that you write, good, bad, or otherwise, is public.
Information, yeah.
Thank you, Mr. McMillan. Ms. Horn?
Well, my question, I guess like on Section 1.3, like for instance, the first one is at least 90% of students and families find benefit from their school's educational experiences. Like, what are we using to, you know, that's, like, what are we using to say, yes, that's happening?
Well, and I think that's part of the problem, because in the past, we did a school survey, and I don't think that has been done in the past year or so. So we have nothing to base that on, because we haven't done a survey.
So we would just, that's what you're saying, we would just have to take what we do have available and only look at those items. And I'm assuming that, we are assuming we would have theoretically Tian Ready scores back that we would use for this report, is that correct? I mean, that's, if we're putting any numbers in there, they would be from this year?
I'm not sure how reliable those would be. I would be really hesitant to use. So if we're not holding teachers, if we're holding teachers harmless, I think we need to follow suit with the superintendent.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Fugit?
Ms. Bounds, I would just recommend by Wednesday, having from Mr. Beckett, what data is available. You know, which of these do they think we can get some good availability, rather than just sit here and say we're going to wipe out, maybe we wipe out some questions, not necessarily a whole section. If somebody could tell us what data might be available, I think that would be helpful. And then Wednesday, we could then decide, this is the tool we're going to use. And then I guess we have a few weeks to get that done and get it to you.
That's correct. Dr. Davis or Dr. Raisler, either one of you can talk to John Beckett and get us what information's available?
Yes, ma'am, we can.
Okay, and send it out to the whole board? And then we could either choose to use that as part of the scoring, or just use it, I would think just use it as a baseline, you know, to look for next year's evaluation tool.
Yeah, I think it would depend on which data he gives us. And if there's some data that we know historically we can't count on, but if there's some that's just internally generated that we can count on, maybe we decide to use that. So.
Okay, thank you. Okay, Ms. Owen?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Section 1.2.4 has a cost associated with it. So if the Finance Department could give us that cost, the item says that the 2020 pay plan is that either our average teacher base pay will be one of the top 20 school systems in Tennessee, or we will increase our average teacher base pay by 20% by 2020. And at the time this was written in 1415, we were 45th. So I think we need a number to go with that item.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions on the superintendent evaluation model or discussion? And I think the hard thing is, is that, I don't know, maybe the law director could direct that. I mean, we could suspend the evaluation possibly, but if we're going to do it, we have to do it in June. So that's the urgency of this discussion tonight and getting it all in order and voted on by Wednesday.
Ms. Bounds, I would just say, I agree with you. I think it's urgent that we do one. I think it would be bad form to not do one. And so I think if we could decide on Wednesday, are there questions we're going to throw out? And if, then let's just move on. I agree with you. I think that's a good plan.
Okay, thank you. Okay, that completes all of those items. And I believe we have Ms. Roundtree with?
Public forum.
Public forum.
Our first speaker is Lance McCold.
Good evening. I'm Lance McCold, Knoxville resident, Madam Chair and Board. Thank you for taking time to listen to me. I wanted to talk to you about the policy J. 191. I wanted to talk to you about, um, the policy J nine, one ninety-one. I, I started working on, um, with, uh, Ms. Massey on the Policy Review Committee in October of, of twenty sixteen. And, uh, this was part of the policies we reviewed. It's been a long time getting to the point, this point. I, I want to really appreciate all of you for giving all this stuff a really hard look. I think J one ninety-one is not the policy I'd like us to have, but it's a big step forward. It's a long ways from perfect, but it's a way forward. I think you ought to go with it and then think about making it better in the year ahead. So as far as J ninety-one, one ninety-one, I don't have anything else to say, but I do think, um, we have really big discipline issues in our schools. Uh, I had the occasion to meet a young man that goes to our schools, um, a studious fellow, sort of shy, quiet, high level of self-control, who's also the victim of persistent bullying. He's complained to the teachers, his parents have complained to the teachers, um, nothing's ever happened, um, neither has the bullies been, been disciplined nor has he been protected from further discipline. Um, a weekend before last, I was on a backpack or camping trip with a Boy Scout troop I've served for many years and I took the occasion while driving there to ask some of the boys. I said, well, you know, this, I, I, I heard about this, uh, case with a kid in the schools and, um, and he's, you know, he's been bullied, but nothing's ever been done. And they said, oh yeah, the teachers are never, have never any help, they never do Now, I know and you know that the teachers, our, our teachers want to do the best thing, but, and they are probably doing their very best, but we are short-staffed, we don't have enough coun- counselors, social workers, we don't have the staff we need. And so when you don't have the staff, the teachers can't provide, or the teachers and administrators can't provide the supports to prevent bullying that we should be doing. So, but this does tie back to one ninety-one because one ninety-one lays out the punishments for each mis-infraction. And so this boy is well behaved, the victim I'm talking about, and he's got an extraordinary level of self-control for a young person his age, but his bullies look at his reluctance to fight back as a sign of weakness. And whatever the teachers and the administration are thinking, I don't know, but you know, he's a real person and like all real persons, we have our limits. And all of us can be pushed, pushed past our limits and when we don't provide the supports to our students to protect them from mistreatment by other students, we are at risk of having them exceed their capabilities for self-control and acting out. So the, the bullying is a level three infraction, not his infraction, but somebody else's infraction. So he might, you know, have enough and strike back and find himself in a fight, which is a level three infraction, but, you know, he's been driven to it by months and months and months of mistreatment and lack of adult, uh, support. Or he might all of a sudden get half so much, he grabs his bookbag and swings it hard enough to knock the other kid down and then it's assault on a student, which is a level five infraction. And this kid could be suspended for a long time because we have stood by and let him be pushed beyond his limits. So I guess I want, want you to realize that these policies, um, the policies are not enough of a solution to these problems. If we don't have the supports for the students and the teachers and the staff to be able to deal with these things and make sure that they're actually covered, all the policies in the world are only just going to punish the kids and some of the kids who don't deserve to be punished in the first place. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Courtney Shea.
My name is Courtney Shea, I'm a resident of Knox County and I'm just going to briefly thank the board for the consideration of the many moving pieces of the puzzles that are, are required to keep our school system moving. I would like you to continue to support the changes in the discipline policy, which are one of the pieces of the puzzle that is, uh, part of the, um, recommendations from your twenty sixteen report, hoping to address disparities in educational outcome. And I hope you will continue to support that piece of the puzzle, um, each, as we gain, as we change school culture and as we gain experience with these, um, discipline policies, I'm sure there's going to be for, further tweaking, but we have to take these initial steps and actually move forward in this direction. And I appreciate the hard work of your staff in bringing these changes forward and, um, hope that you approve them at your board meeting. Thank you.
Thank you. Madam Chair, that concludes Public Forum.
Okay, Board Forum, Mr. McMillan, do you have anything? Ms. Hill?
Attended two bachelorettes this weekend, they were wonderful, Carnes and Horton Valley, class of two thousand eighteen, exciting.
Okay.
Thank you.
Ms. Fugit, Ms. Roundtree, Mr. Norman, Ms. Owen, Ms. Etheridge?
Well, I attended the magnet showcase of dance at Austin East, we'd had Beaumont, Vine and Austin East. And if we don't know what our magnet dollars are going for, we should have been there. It was amazing, it was outstanding and it was raved by everybody that attended. Um, so I didn't do a personal invite last week, it got kind of by, by me with all the stuff we were, um, discussing, but it was really good and I'm just excited for what the kids did and some of the dances were choreographed by a kid, by the students. So next year, I'll invite you to all attend the, um, magnificent performance at the end of the school year.
Thank you, Ms. Kuntz. Okay, well, I'll just wrap up by saying it's Thank A Teacher Week, so be sure and everyone thank their teachers throughout this week, um, tomorrow through Friday, so thank you. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Adjourn.
All in favor, say aye. Aye.